Welcome every evening, I mean everybody. We've got a good full house this evening. And our monthly Board of Commissioners meeting is now in session. Alan couldn't make it tonight. He was, he's been kinda under the weather. He came by coughing real bad and everything and he said he really hated it. He couldn't be here, you know, so we're gonna try again to get through. We really miss him, you know. But we're gonna do our best. I think we'll make it one way or the other. So, right now, we'll call to order and welcome everybody. And I think we need to have our pledge of allegiance. If everyone would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need to clarify one thing. Did, was there anybody here that wanted to speak that did not sign up in the back? That had anything they wanted to say? So, we're all good. Okay. So, on our invocation, we ain't gonna praise it, what we gonna do?
We'll do what?
What you wanna do?
We'll just take a minute and...
Okay, we'll just take a minute of silence there for our invocation. And if you have any special things you might need to consider, now's that time. Okay, let's move on down to the agenda. Okay. Our fourth item on our, on our agenda is Agenda Approval.
Could I, could I please move that we swap Agenda Item 10 into 8 and 8 into 10? So, following the police report will be Director Evans. And then we will have the discussion on the Executive Secretary. And then we will have the discussion of the suggested rules of procedure.
Okay. Also, number seven?
No, seven's fine. We're just, we go, they simplified it. We're gonna flip eight and 10.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yes.
We're good.
I, I did wanna mention, I had several residents that asked me to, to add to the agenda tonight a discussion on the dog park.
Okay.
I think it'd be better if we waited till next month. Because by our operating rules, all we can do is discuss it tonight. We can't take any action. If we put it on the agenda next month, we can do discussion and action. So, I'm, I just want everybody to know, I'm, I'm, I will take responsibility for putting that on the agenda next month, a discussion and action on the dog park.
Do I have a motion? That we approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The approval of minutes. And we have the minutes of the special meeting of January 17th. We have the minutes of the special meeting of January 21st. And we have the minutes of the regular meeting of January 21st.
I wanna make a motion, we approve all three sets of minutes if there's not any changes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? We, we're moving on. Okay? On our, our next, on our next deal, we're gonna deal with Mr. Jeremy Dixon. No, no, wait a minute, hold on. Public comments.
Take your glasses off, see if you can read.
Is there anybody on the sign up sheet?
Whoever's on the sign up sheet, I think that we had one person. And he wanted, okay. David Plumridge. I understand you wanted to take a little more time?
Please, I won't take the whole extra time, but...
Okay, carry on.
David Plumridge, 724 O E W. At the January meeting, several points were made during the discussion of the speed limit on Ocean Bullhorn. And tonight, I'd like to highlight and add some clarity to a few of those points. First off, I thank the board for hearing me again on this. And the fact that it's important to you that you get public feedback on, on issues that are before you. I would ask, though, that it's not just enough to get public feedback, but that that feedback should have some reasoned approach to it. I don't like something shouldn't be a reason, I think, that rules and ordinances are made. If that were the case, I'd like to go on record tonight as saying I don't want any taxes. So, we can get that off today. So, clearly, that's not the way you'll govern. But I'm hoping that you'll use that same, apply the same reasoning to this decision. At the last meeting, Chief Dixon reported the fatality rate doubles with the increased speed from 35 to 45. Stopping distances is increased by 79 feet. Golf carts aren't legal when the speed limit's thirty, above 35 miles an hour. And N C dot will not allow crosswalks on roadways with speeds posted higher than 35 miles per hour. The reason N C dot does that, and if you research how they go about the, the, the way they set speed limits, is they found that it's not safe in excess of 35 miles an hour to have pedestrians crossing the street. So, they deem that a not safe area for that to take place. The chief was asked last week, or last month, rather, if we had any problems due to the increased speed limit. And he said not on his watch. That's, that's the case. I would submit, though, that it, just because we've not had a catastrophe, isn't reason to not take safeguard against that happening. And I think that the increased traffic and the increased pedestrian traffic that we have, that we're not focusing on the safety of that. The chief, when I talked to him a couple of months ago, when he was gathering some of this information, we talked about reasonable precautions. The chief, every morning, puts on his bulletproof vest. It's not a fashion statement, he's not doing it because it's comfortable. And statistically, he knows it's not likely that he'll be shot. He knows that. But he takes that precaution, because in the event that he is, he can minimize the damage that he'll, he'll have to go through. So, that's a reasoned approach for safety. And I, I think that that, that thinking should be applied to this. The planning inspections, Director Evans recorded, he's been working on the N C dot, with N C dot, since 2015 on crosswalk approval. I would suggest that if we're not gonna bring things to fruition, we might not wanna waste his time working on projects for so long. He gets us to the point where we can do it, but we don't take the action to do it. He's, he's gone, a lot of work involved in that. He stated that we need all six of the criteria required for approval of crosswalks in four places on the island, except for the required 35 mile speed limit. It's the only thing that keeps us from having, from Tim, asking them to go ahead with that in the four spots. Three of those spots are in the area where the speed limit is adjusted seasonally, indicating that's all the more reason why that's an area that should not have an increased speed, based on the criteria that the state uses to set minimum speed limits, matching speed limits. A couple of commissioners talked about how could we get more? Well, we haven't acted on the four that we could. But right after that was brought up, Town Manager Hewitt stated, "We should move to get these four crosswalks done and then work on additional locations, get our foot in the door, and then we can proceed with it where we, we feel that it's necessary and wherever Tim can come up with the information to prove the need for it to the state." During the January meeting, it was brought up that the H B P O A had done a survey. And I appreciate the fact that the, the P O A did that. They allowed me to speak at one of their meetings where we started this conversation. And I think it's great that we do that, we get a lot of public input on that. The, the survey included, and this was brought up at the last meeting, question 15, it's in your packet. "The speed limit on O E W passed the period increases to 45 miles per hour October through April. Do you support keeping this change of speed limit in the off season?" An overwhelming number of people said yes, that responded to that, to that question. Seventy-five percent were, were thereabouts. What was not mentioned at the last meeting was that three questions prior to that move in the survey was question 12. "Should the Board of Commissioners make it a priority to work with N C dot to re-strike public access walkways, rate one to five, with five being the highest priority?" Overwhelmingly, it was said that that was the highest priority. So, there's a need for that. And I don't fault the survey. That gets the conversation started. We need all the information to focus down on what, what you're gonna give up and what you're gonna get out of any of these things that you folks are asked to, to address. Wrap it up here. I mentioned last, at the last meeting, the town seasonal speed limit changes causes a disproportionate treatment of our citizens and visitors simply because of the side of the arbitrary line they live on. And what I meant by that, if it's such a peachy idea, you would do it everywhere, right? But we only do it down there, which by the state's definition, is the least likely place you should do it, as three areas qualify for that crosswalk. I don't see how it's okay that this board, especially in light of the information that's come out of this discussion, that we wouldn't move forward with correcting this issue. And with that, I, I thank you, and I do respect the, the decision you make. Brian, I believe, talked about how hard some of these positions are. Although I'm not happy you're uncomfortable, I am happy that you put that much effort into it, all of you. And I believe that's why all of us voted for you, so that you would hear everybody out and you would put that much consideration into the decisions you make that affect all of us. So, thank you.
That's it? Mm-hmm. Okay. Item number seven is our police report. And this time, we'll hear from our Chief Jeremy Dixon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Very happy to say, February, everything's looking good right now. We've not taken a lot of reports for break-ins or anything else. So, really don't have a lot to talk about. Same public safety announcement, lock your doors. If you see something suspicious, call us. But as of right now, everything looks really good. If you have questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you, but just really don't have a lot to talk about. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we've moved seven. We've got seven up here.
So, number 10...
Number 10 is seven.
10 goes next.
Okay. We're gonna, at this time, we're gonna have Mr. Tim forward here.
How everybody doing tonight? I'm not sure if we're setting some kind of Guinness World Record with this ordinance, but about a minute, some of, a lot of people in here know me. I got, I got sick and had to have surgery four years ago. This funeral, like, four years ago. We started with this issue a year before that. The big house issue. That's how long this has been going on. We presented this, we, we worked on the big house issues for years and years in the planning board. It was discussed for years and years with the Board of Commissioners. It went back and forth. I took it upon myself to try to come up with some solutions to all the questions that were answered and try to come up with something that people were asking they would like to see. And I kept the White Board busy in my office for quite a while, working on this issue. There was a long time, you walk in my office, you, you would see different things up, up there, and us trying to come up with, staff trying to come up with what the best work. We presented it to the planning board, I think sometime in the beginning of last summer. They, maybe it was even in the, in the spring. They, they, we went through it, they approved it, go to the Board of Commissioners. It got set on a burner a couple of times. There were some hot topics we brought it forward. Won't say, but sometime in the summer, latter in the summer, it got sent. The board said it would look good, sent it to the attorneys. The attorney we had then passed it along, and they reviewed it and sent it back, so here we are. If anybody is in here that hasn't seen this presentation, it's because you haven't been to a board meeting, because it's been done a few times. Now, we went ahead and put it, after the board saw it last time, we put it in a ordinance form, and they saw it last time, and, and that's why it got sent to the attorney. So, it's back. And if the board would like for me to go through the presentation that we've shown twice already, I'd be glad to do it. It explains what the ordinance is actually doing. If the board wants me to do it, I'll run through it.
We're good. You want?
I've heard it.
Okay, we're good.
All right. Well, then we'll go on to the ordinance. The, the ordinance pretty much lays out here. We, we moved everything into the ordinance that was, that we had discussed. And basically, what it does is it graduates the setbacks and the stormwater up with the size of the lots. And it makes a maximum house size of 6,000 square feet. Now, lot, most of our lots, or a lot of our lots, are 50 to 100. And the stormwater percentage will not allow 6,000 square foot of house anyway on those lots. The only place that it would affect is down there on the west end, where we have such large lots, where someone starts combining lots. And then they would, they would have a hard time with the setbacks, because then there would be combining lots on the second row, or, you know, in some of the smaller areas, like the canals. So, it, it does the graduation. It takes into consideration that lots that would not be able to have such large houses to be built on, they're not penalized in any way, other than they are graduated at the same deference. And what I mean by that is, is that if you're, you've got 30% at a, a certain percentage or certain square footage, and if you want to build a bigger house, then you're just simply reducing your environmental footprint because of your increase in lot size. So, that doesn't mean you can't build a big house. It just means that you can't build as big a house. And then it goes, and so you can still have a bigger house than the guy that couldn't have a bigger house, if you've got a bigger lot. And it graduates up that way, up to a maximum of 6,000 square feet. So, if you're on one of those lots way down there, where you get to calculate 600 and something, all the way out to the water, then you're gonna be reduced by this ordinance, and your setbacks are gonna be increased. And so, you can still build that 6,000 square foot house, but it takes into consideration your neighbors for the setback increase. It takes into consideration, because we're also changing the parking lot sizes, I mean, the parking space sizes for parking. And it basically helps us try to eliminate some of the issues that we had with those big houses. Now, that said, how many complaints we've had since the last one we've had? I mean, I, I just don't know what complaints register anymore. When we did the noise ordinance and that kind of stuff, and we realized that it was a behavioral issue, you know what I mean? It just doesn't seem to be up on the forefront. But this has been in the making, it's here before you. And I'm assuming that everybody's read it and knows what it is. I'd be willing to ask, answer any questions from anybody. Oh, there is one other thing. There's an error on page 48, I believe. We've already, this, this has been, this ordinance has been passed grounds of motion until we've already done the text amendment. The statutory law...
Yes, 48.
The statutory law, they actually wrote a statutory law that does not allow towns to set minimum house sizes. And so, we had a minimum house size that we removed. We were going to clean up some bad language, but since then, we've actually removed it and already made the text amendment. So, that portion has already been changed. I wanted to change it. The 750 square feet.
I have two. On the same page, under Section E?
Yeah.
I, I just think it's, too much was stricken. It says, "Per Kama Guidelines for New Construction and Remain Required Setback."
It should say, "However, it's a structure to be relocated, can meet Kama, Kama Ocean Side setback rules." And...
Remain within.
And meet required setbacks, and no further relief can be given.
Still a remain, it's meet.
Yeah, where's the egg zone?
What is the egg zone? Yeah, where, that's outside, that, that's outside 500 here, flood plain. It's, it's basically, it's in it. You have a flood, but it's probably not gonna happen more than, more than them, 1% chance there, 500 here. And if you're in an egg zone, you're basically, be like building over on the, off the island, inland. It's the same type of construction. Now, you're still in a super high inland, but you're on the island, but in the egg zone. We do have some egg zones.
We have a few places on the island that's in the egg zone?
Okay. And Tim, will the proposed new parking restrictions limit or prevent the type of building that was done with the three homes that were done two years ago?
And what it'll do is, is we can't limit the number of bedrooms. The statute of rules says we can't limit the number of bedrooms. But it doesn't say, see, we, we require X amount of parking places per bedroom, and by increasing this, what it does is it, it, it basically stops them from being able to encroach as much as they are by having 11 and 12 parking places in, in front of their house, because it's gonna, it's gonna take away one or two of them. That's what it's gonna do. Yeah. That's what it's gonna do. Now, there were some other, I don't know if you want me to go this far, but there was some language. It, it never got sent forward, but there was some language at the end, right there, which I can't see, by the way. There was some language there that talked about additional possible regulations. And if you look at that, it talks about a 10% buffer requirement and that kind of stuff. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that was what we were proposing to maybe even limit it more, but I don't think it got any traction. It was sent forward, but I don't think it ever got any traction.
Yeah.
That was not sent with the, it was not part of this ordinance, and it wasn't sent to the attorney.
Councils reviewed this and find it acceptable?
Yes.
I understand you're going to a pretty busy meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm going to the CRC meeting tomorrow, where we hope to stand up, make more noise about the inland hazard areas.
We wish you good luck. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Have a good evening.
Do you need a motion to progress?
No. I, I would actually suggest more in keeping with our procedure, that to give the public time to look at this one more time, that we actually, our action should be to put this on next month's agenda for a vote, for approval or not. And that will give our public another chance to see what we are saying is a proposed ordinance that we are going to vote on.
What you, what you need to do is you actually need to vote to set a public hearing for the next meeting.
Right. I move that we set a public hearing at the March B O C M for the ordinance amending our code of ordinances, the zoning code, Chapter 157 zoning code.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we pass on that. Good to go. Tim, thanks.
Yes, have a good evening.
You too, Brooke. All right.
Number nine.
Going to eight or nine?
Nine.
All right, on our, our next is number nine, "Discussion and Possible Direction on Removing the Designation and Responsibilities of Executive Secretary from the Town Ordinances." We're gonna turn that one over to Ms. Pat.
Okay. There are actually, actually, we, and we have been told by our last town attorney that we are the only municipality she knows of that actually has this executive secretary designation. And first, to me, some of the duties that are detailed in the ordinance that I believe was created four years ago, seemed to me to be inconsistent with how we are supposed to do business according to the school of government and the legal and regulatory requirements of how municipal government works, in particular, special meetings, which the ordinance says that the executive secretary will be responsible for creating the agenda for each regular and special meeting. Yet, special meetings are the right of any two commissioners to call the meeting on the topics that they feel are appropriate. Also, there's a number of places where it seems that the executive secretary is a specific person that gets information and guidance from the clerk, town manager, et cetera. And really, again, that is something that every commissioner has the right on. The way that an agenda should be created is that the Board of Commissioners, any commissioner, sends their item to the town clerk, and the town clerk will include that item on the agenda for a Board of Commissioners meeting. Special meetings are called by either the pro tem, or the mayor, or two commissioners in agreement on the agenda items. I don't see that the executive secretary position is necessary. We have ways of operating as individual commissioners and a Board, and the Board of Commissioners. And so, I don't believe that we need to have an executive secretary position, and it should be removed from Ordinance 3005. If the board wants to have a secretary to do certain things, like make sure we do our objectives, to facilitate certain discussions on various things, the board can say such a thing and say, "Would somebody do this?" And we can operate as a sort of a, we make certain things happen, but it doesn't have to be a resolution, it doesn't have to be an ordinance, and it is more of a bookkeeping thing, not a control on the agenda.
Do I have a motion?
This is only for direction, not for action today, because, again, this is amending an ordinance, and so, we would simply, I would say what we would do is we would put forward at the next meeting, a very clear just, this section is removed from that ordinance for public comment and our consideration before we would vote. But I'm more interested in if there's any discussion around this in disagreement of striking the executive secretary position.
No. I, I would just point out that Pat is the executive secretary. And...
And I'm not dodging work. I'm not known for dodging work.
Let me finish. And, and I was gonna say, she, she's not doing this because she doesn't want to do the work. You, you can see from the agenda that she has a ton of work that we're gonna discuss tonight, and we did the same thing last month. But she's proposing this because she thinks it's a better way to run the, the meetings and the board, and I agree with her.
I agree also.
What up?
I also feel it's not necessary.
Then we'll put it on, we'll put it on the agenda.
Next month's agenda.
Next month's agenda.
Now, item number eight.
Yes.
Discussion and possible action on the suggested rules of procedure for the Town of Holden Beach Board of Commissioners. Ms. Pat?
I have received a few change, suggested changes from Commissioner Sullivan and Commissioner Tiner that I will go through. And if we all agree on them, we can simply say, "We agree," and get this cleaned up so that we can approve it. Does anybody else have any comments besides Mike and Woody before I start? No? Okay.
You're gonna give us those changes?
Yes.
Okay.
So, in this month's packet, on page 26, since we just decided we will not have an executive secretary, we will actually strike reference to the Board of Commissioners Executive Secretary in Rule 8, Part C. So, anything referring to the executive secretary will be removed, and then the last sentence will again become, "The mayor pro tem shall serve at the board's pleasure." Agreed?
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Okay. On page 28, Woody pointed out that in draft Agenda A, Point 2, for some reason, I wrote "along with any and all supporting documents," and everywhere else, I had only written "along with any." So, for consistency, we can strike "and all." On B, adoption of the agenda, number two, there is a word missing where I say, "The board may not subtract items," and the proposed agenda stated in the notice of the special meeting. where I say, the board may not subtract items in the proposed agenda stated in the notice of the special meeting unless those calling the meeting agree. I obviously did a cut and paste, and I forgot to paste in the word agree. Acceptable? Okay. On page twenty-nine, Rule fifteen, there is a discussion of if a member of the public wishes to request the board includes an item. Every place else we've discussed agenda items. I realize we're always talking about supplying the information to the town clerk, not town clerk slash town manager. I'm fine to keep town clerk slash town manager. But if we do, then we should have town manager, not town manage. But I still, at this point, I would ask whether or not we want to make it a request to the town clerk. Town clerk, town manager, do you have a?
If you send it to the clerk and there's any issue, she's gonna confer with me. Take the manager off.
Take the manager out. It's sent to the town clerk, thank you. On page thirty-one, Rule twenty-two, after making the point that we're always going to require a second, under Rule twenty-two, I need to say second required, not second not required. Thank you, Woody.
You're welcome.
Under debate, I had a discussion with Commissioner Sullivan, who prefers that we do limit debates on substantive motions to two go-arounds instead of ten minutes for the first speak, five minutes for the second, not five minutes for each subsequent. He believes that two go-arounds should be sufficient. I don't disagree with him on that. And the same would be for a discussion on a procedural motion. We would have a first and second speech, not first and subsequent speech. Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Page thirty-three, at the very bottom, to end the debate, call the previous question. At the very end, the motion is not in order until Commissioner Sullivan suggests that we strike until there have been at least ten minutes of debate, and simply make it until every member has an opportunity to speak, at least to speak once. And I am fine with that. The boilerplate was about, just everybody's had one time.
But you've already made that change here, Brian.
No, I'm suggesting we will take it out. We will take out that there's been ten minutes of debate, and just leave it to, everybody's had a chance to talk. Acceptable? Okay. On page thirty-seven, the, under A, frequency of public comment period, it's actually better if the sentence, subject to waiver by an express resolution of the B O C, the following regulations shall apply and be enforced with respect to any public comment period. That should actually go ahead of A because it does refer to everything that follows. So the wording is correct, it's just that it should precede the different points. Because it does, it does have impact on each of the points.
So you're just taking those three lines and moving them above A?
And moving them ahead of A, under public comment period. And again, Mike caught this. And it's, it should be moved ahead. And then the final has to do on page forty. This is approving addresses or presentations listed on the proposed agenda. A lot of this came from our last rules of procedure, and there were some strange things in it. Mike and I both agree that it doesn't make sense that you would have somebody come to a meeting, you would approve the agenda, and then during the meeting, you would, you would decide that you're not going to allow them to speak. So we believe that the sentence, alternatively, the B O C may by majority vote, strike, defer to another meeting, change the order of presentation, limit the subject matter, or limit the allotted time, should be removed. If we've approved the agenda, we've approved them speaking under the auspices of what they gave us. And then the last part is the sentence, subsequently, during the meeting, the B O C may by adoption of a motion, again, we should not say defer or table an address or presentation. We've accepted it. Now, we may adjourn prior to hearing the address if something happens that we have to adjourn. So I, I suggest we leave that in there. But the point is, if we do approve an agenda and the speaker is expecting to speak, they should be allowed to speak.
Yep.
Okay? Then with those changes, that is it. Yes? You found something else?
I did.
Okay.
Just, I don't know whether I did or I didn't, but I need clarification. If you go to page thirty-eight and you go to K, under questions and comments, at the end of all speakers' and spokesperson's comments, any member of the board may ask the speaker such questions. Should that be, instead of all, should that be each speaker?
Yes, may ask each, well, each speaker, any speaker. At the end of all, it's, it's, no, it is, we're supposed to allow everybody to speak before we then address back.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's actually been in several documents that you hold any questions until after everybody has made their public comment or spoken.
So you just need to be, may ask any speaker?
Let's see. At the end of all speakers.
Yeah, so it would actually be, may ask any speaker. Under K, such questions. I will give the town clerk all of this. Yes, David?
This is a very minor point. Page thirty-seven, paragraph C, sign-up sheet, any member of the T H B public? I would think that T H B is extraneous there, that the public is
You're right.
The public.
Right, okay. We'll remove T H B.
May I make a comment on a couple of items?
Yes, please.
Page thirty-seven, under section B and C, the last sentence of both those paragraphs, address, limiting the content of what is being addressed during public speaking. Similarly, with thirty-seven H and M, I would caution the board against trying to limit what people are saying when they are making public comments. I would probably strike those sections that address what can and can't be said during public comment period.
Well, our
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, with that, our first public comment period is always about the agenda. Okay, so that's the only limiting factor there. And then three minutes or six minutes upon request is pretty standard from what I've seen for a lot of towns.
Right, and the time limitation is fine. I don't have any issues with the time limitation. Specifically, thirty-seven H, topic exclusions. That is
But Jennifer, you got, you got a public comment period on the agenda items. Then at the end of the meeting, you got a public comment period where you talk about anything in the world.
Right, and I think that there's a better way to phrase that so that it doesn't come across as a content restriction on
What's your suggestion?
H, I would strike that one completely. I think before, earlier, when you have the limitations on how the agenda items are brought up, who's gonna speak, signing in, all those measures are sort of taking care of everything that you're trying to address by adding this additional language. I think the additional language isn't necessary, and it may cause some issues. So the best policy is probably going to be to remove it.
Am I, maybe I'm confused. Thirty-seven H is specifically about not commenting on candidacy.
Right.
That, I, I don't know why that topic exclusion was put in by, 'cause that's, that goes back to four years ago. I mean, we carried this one forward. I guess it just didn't seem illogical to me to continue to say we don't want people getting up and starting to discuss candidacy during Board of Commissioners meetings.
Right, and I understand where that's coming from. My suggestion at this point, if you wanna move forward with all the other changes that seem like they have consensus, would be to remove it at this time. And then if we wanna add it in, we can work on language that might better effectuate what you're trying to accomplish without having it cause issues that are unnecessary.
Okay, we do not have to approve this today. So I would actually rather have your suggestion to put in for the final version than to approve something and then in the next month change it. That would just seem sensible to me.
Jennifer, I'd like to see your rationale, too. I mean, you said it causes an issue, but what's the issue?
Free speech.
Okay, if it's free speech, that's fine.
Yeah, it's a free speech issue.
Right, when you start to try to limit what people are gonna get up and say in a public comment period, then you run into issues with
But if you got two public comment periods, is it really an issue?
The point is that you're trying to tell people that they can't talk about certain items, no matter how many times you allow them to get up and speak. If they can't speak about certain items, you're infringing their right to speak. That's, that's the position that our council's taking.
I understand, but if you got another comment period where they talk about anything, they won't do. I don't see how you're limiting free speech, but
Town attorney has a concern. I, I think that the best thing to do is have her give us alternative language that we can then alter this and vote on a final approved version next time.
Let's get it right.
Yeah, let's get it right. I don't wanna keep reworking this through the year.
Neither do we.
So we'll take, make a motion, and we table it till next meeting.
Second.
You got a second? All in favor? All opposed? Now, I just got it.
I will prepare a requ, well, we theoretically need to prepare a request for the town attorney. To specifically, no, to specifically address this. We can do that and provide it. It will be specifically to, to propose alternative language to Rule thirty-seven H.
I thought there was two, is that the only one? You said H and
She mentioned a couple she had issues with.
What was the other one?
I'll look at thirty-seven B and C, and also thirty-seven H and M.
B, C, H, F. Okay. I will write that up and give it to the town clerk to give to the town attorney. And it will be specifically to provide suggested alternative language to Rule thirty-seven B C H F at the March meeting. Okay?
Any more discussion? All right. Item number eleven, discussion pertaining to the speed limit on Ocean Boulevard. We turn it over to Mike.
Okay. Well, Mr. Plumberidge gave a, a good synopsis of what we discussed at the last meeting and the information that was given to the group that was present last meeting from both Commissioner Tim and from Chief Dixon. I really have, don't have much to add to that, except to say it's a pretty hot topic of conversation. There's people divided both ways, whether we should retain the speed at forty-five or lower it at thirty-five. My point of view is, I'm more interested in knowing what the people who live on the island think about it than what the people who own property but don't live here, because the folks who live here have to put up with that speed limit every day. And I would ask that whatever your position is on this particular item, I'd like to hear it. So if you take the time to send me an email with the reasons why you're for or against it, I would appreciate that. Next month, I think we should vote on it. We'll give people another opportunity to talk about it, and we can vote on it next month, one way or the other.
I mean, I've, I've been privy to some of the emails that have been flying back and forth. I, I think what I would like to say specifically is, in my opinion, what, what's important about this is the marked crosswalks. Okay? Saving two minutes, and I live on the West End, so I'm one of the people who is impacted by an extra couple minutes. I can live with an extra couple minutes each way. And the golf carts, it's a nice if people have them. And I know there are a lot of renters who come who like to use them, but to me, that is not the point of this. The point is the benefit of having cross, marked crosswalks. And that will be ultimately what, to me, what drives a decision.
I've been asked by quite a few people to not budge on the subject at all because it's been like that for a long time. But I think the repercussions of some of this are, are greater than getting there just a little bit faster. And I work on this island every day, and I, I love it when the speed limit changes. I don't know why, 'cause I always thought, I guess, it was five minutes faster and not a minute and something. But I think if you're gonna start enforcing ticketing golf carts and not allowing them on Ocean Boulevard period during those towns, and I've had people, and our season's getting longer. I don't know if you guys have noticed that, but I mean, people are staying longer. I've seen them going right on with the weather that we're having. I mean, it's February and it's seventy degrees. I mean, it's a little weird, but I think I'm seeing more and more people staying longer, visiting longer, and, and spending money here. So we need to keep them safe. At the same time, you know, I definitely wanna listen to everybody's opinion. This is a, I don't know how long this has been going on. I don't know when it was put in place or why it was put in place that the speed limit was raised back in the day. But I think ever since I've been here, as long as I can remember, it always went up. But we need a lot of input on this one. I mean, this is one of those, and you hit it on the head, this is one of those decisions that some of us absolutely wish we could just turn our heads to, but I mean, we have to do it. If we save one person and one life, it, it's gonna be worth it. And to save, you know, I know in this day and time, every minute's precious, and we're not guaranteed another one, but I think we could all maybe consider living with it. But I, I, the crosswalks are a main deal. And if we can even get more of them and, and have people, and I said at the last meeting about revenue and that type of thing. I mean, we need people to visit, we need people to rent houses, and we need, we need them to keep coming. And it's not over, you know, Labor Day weekend anymore. So I just consider it. I'm not, I'm not focusing my opinion on it at all. I'm, I'm gonna do what most of the people wanna do, and I just would ask that people consider that.
As a lot of you know, 'cause you got my email, I'm kinda like Brian. I wanna hear it from a lot of people about what they think about this subject. So I sent out an email to about a hundred folks that I had email addresses from, that I collected during the election. It wasn't a random survey, but it was ninety-nine percent of them were voters on this island. And I sent out the survey, and I asked them about Dog Park, and I, and if you, the ones that saw my email, you know what was in it. But I, in the email, I listed some of the stuff about, that was said at the last meeting about the Dog Park and then the speed limit. I listed a lot of things about what was said, for and against the speed limit. I even, Dave, I copied some of this stuff right out of your document. So I tried to bias my letter. I just said, here's the facts that were presented at the meeting, what do you think? And out of a hundred emails, I got, as of today, I got fifty-three responses, which is, which would've loved to have that kind of response when I was working. On the speed limit, it was twenty-one in favor of changing it, twenty-four opposed, and eight with no preference. twenty-four opposed, and eight with no preference. So that's fifty-fifty, give or take. What people did comment on, Jeremy, was golf carts. Thirteen of my responses were about golf carts. And that you got underage kids driving the golf carts on Ocean Boulevard, they're not using seat belts, they're not following the laws. And a lot of my, a lot of folks said, your first accident's gonna be when a golf cart gets hit. It ain't gonna be somebody crossing the street in a forty-five mile an hour zone. So I do think we need to, to, to think about more about golf carts. I mean, I love golf carts, but they're a pain in the butt in the summertime on Ocean Boulevard. Uh, but the, the feedback I got, which is about what I expected, once again, on the speed limit, was basically fifty-fifty.
We've actually, we've done a lot of that too, so this is something we definitely look into, but I appreciate my idea.
At the same time.
Go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
At the same time, when you live on a canal and there's a bunch of them, and you're on the West End, and you gotta lug all that stuff to the ocean on all the houses that are for rent down there, they, there's people that would fight you tooth and nail for a golf cart, so it's, this is a lot of give and take. And if, if it's, if you're actually gonna start ticketing golf carts, if we don't do something, then I mean, they need to understand that.
And it was, it's not the fact of the golf cart people were complaining about. They were complaining about how the golf carts are being used. You know, a lot of, you, we all see it. We see young kids running up and down the road on golf carts. Yeah.
For sure.
Those y'all have replied to my email. Thank you very much.
All right. Mike, you good on that one?
Yes.
So we put on.
Table it till next, next meeting.
Item twelve. Discussion and possible action on a request to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a re- recommendation of possible uses for seven ninety-six Ocean Boulevard West property. Commissioner Pat, you want to take that?
Okay, so this is our first example of how having one of these recommendations is going to work. I've put, or hopefully work, I've put together some background about, you know, what's this about? Why I, I think we need to make a request, the types of questions that I think that the board that I'm asking for a recommendation from should consider. We need to, as a board, agree that we want to ask Parks and Rec to do this, and whether or not, in my, my opinion, whether or not the charge questions that I have are good to everybody, or are there some missing, or are there some you don't like? And then if we agree on that, then we can make the request. But if the majority of the board doesn't think this is an appropriate use of Parks and Rec's time, then there can be a vote that we don't do it. So that's sort of how this is gonna work. I think since we did, when we bought, when the town bought seven ninety-six last September, with the idea that it was going to help with noise buffering for the lift station three to that property, there were a number of items that were discussed in closed session of potential uses for this building. We had a discussion that we felt it was important to buy the building, and then in the near term, a discuss, a decision could be made of what use the building might be to the town or to residents, whatever. So there was a significant list of ideas that came from town staff and some of the commissioners suggest if we, if we ask Parks and Rec to do this, that before the Parks and Rec committee looks at that list, that they brainstorm their own ideas first before looking at the list, but that, of course, would be up to Parks and Rec. But it is timely for discussion and a decision to be made this year on what is the long-term plan for seven ninety-six Ocean Boulevard West. And so I would like to request that Parks and Rec be commissioned to, to come up with the recommendation. Since it is a town facility and usually Parks and Rec, if there's a potential for use for some sort of recreational activity or usage, does take over sort of the planning for that, that location or site.
Comment.
So is there a motion?
My, my motion is that we ask Parks and Rec, yes.
I think we should, before we have a motion, have some discussion here between the board here for a second.
Do we need a motion? Then we have a discussion, right?
Well, no, you have a motion and then you can discuss.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
She gave your motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Now we're discussing.
Now we're gonna have a discussion. Murdo.
Well. There's a lot of things that has, I'm a contractor, so I know a little bit about houses. I also know that house is residential. It's gonna have to be rezoned. Has Tim looked at it? Has anybody, and I'm not advocating spending money on some engineer to go in there, I'm just asking, maybe did our town building inspector should go look at the building and the condition of the building? Because I've looked at it and it's in pretty rough shape. Has, I would like for him to look at it before we waste, in my opinion, the time of the Parks and Recreation Committee. Because it would just be a suggestion that may, may or may not could even, um, come to fruition. And, um, I just don't want to waste everybody's time when, when we, we honestly don't even know. The second point I would make, and I'm coming in, you said this was done in September, I wasn't here. The second point I would make was, and I asked it at the last meeting, there's definitely a lot of extra money being spent on the pump station for sound deadening. And until, in my opinion, until the pump station is actually up and running, we honestly don't even know that there is a problem or is it gonna be a problem. That pump station was there before and it was, but it was in the ground, but it was still running. And now it's gonna be up in there, and I guess everybody's other opinion is it's gonna be louder. I would hope not.
It, 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 no, based on four, I, I mean, this is again, because you, you weren't going through it, but the raising of it, there are decibel levels that have been measured out to the side, so raising it does make it louder. Pumping station four has a benefit that down in West End, the houses are further apart, and the pumping station is much more removed from the nearest property. So, um, but there were decibel levels that were measured, um, going sideways, so yeah, there, there is information from one, and again.
But this one's different. The next one's gonna be different. I actually looked at the plans. It's got acoustical panels. It has no windows on the side facing the house. And I'm just not convinced that it's gonna be a, an issue or as bad as an issue is we're thinking it is. I just, until somebody goes and looks at it to see if this is even a possibility, I don't think we should put that on that committee.
This, I, this was last month, and, and this is kind of the chicken or egg. Tim did go in it. Before, before the town bought it, Tim was in it. The town manager was in it. But Tim was in it, looking at it, but he can't make a recommendation of what might be required with no idea what the use is. And so we are in a chicken and egg kind of situation. And my proposal is get some ideas of what the possibilities are that people would like to see it used for, and then have an examination of whether or not it's feasible. Again, I, I understand what you're saying, but I also, it's, it's.
I just wish there was a plan in place before we bought it. I mean, there was a designated user or some kind of, some kind of plan for the structure before we purchased it at all. It's not very expensive to get it out of the way and maybe put a parking lot there or something that's not gonna be a, a constant maintenance problem or issue. Whatever we do it to, it's gonna cost money to do it, and it's gonna cost money to keep it up, so I hope.
When we bought it, we had the evaluation that removing the house, removing the buffer would mean that the next house down would have potentially a decibel exceedance for what the target was. So Leo did provide that information before we made the decision.
If I could, what, what happened was, and then we'll, we'll get to the real issue instead of what we already did. We'll get to what we should be talking about is what we're gonna do in the future. But the reason that the house was purchased is because after speaking to the engineer, the cost of putting in all the sound barriers was very high, and he gave us the opinion that it would be less to purchase that property than to do the full soundproofing that, that was required. So that's what we did. Now, as, as far as this goes, I'll, I'll say what I said last month. I think that Tim should go tell us whether this falls into a category where we, we're only allowed to do X number of improvement because of tax purposes and, and, you know. And then, instead of giving Parks and Recreation a blank check, when we know what the limitation is on the money, we should say, we have, we're, we're ready to expend X number of dollars, tell us what you would prefer us to do with that amount of money, rather than just saying, hey, tell us, you know, give us the best wish list you have for that property. I, I think we should narrow the parameters a little bit, and again, I think Tim should go in and tell us that we can do it up to, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars, or whether we can, we can spend three hundred thousand dollars, then it's a question whether we want to put that in the budget. And then if we put it in the budget, it's a question what, what we would do with it after it's in the budget.
Was there any discussions about if you couldn't, at that time, if you couldn't do much to the house, what would you do? Would you just board it up and maintain it or what?
I think we can, I, I don't know what we can, there, there, there are items that Tim says we can certainly do within, even if there's a restriction on how much money you're, you can spend to change it without affecting it. So there are certain things we can do. So the, the issue is what can we do? And then what would people prefer out of that group of things that we can do, what would people prefer that we do? I, I think that's the logical way to go about it.
As I recall, last month, Tim felt uncomfortable as the town inspector being commissioned to go in and give an estimate that could be taken as binding, that if that was gonna be requested, that it would need to be somebody independent. I got, I'm remembering that that's what he discussed last month. David and I.
I'm not asking him to make an estimate. We know that if, you can't go above fifty percent, right? You can't revise it above fifty percent. So the question is, does this particular property, and this property falls outside of that restriction? Does this property fall within or without that restriction? That was the question.
Pre-firm, restriction.
Yeah, that, that was the question. And once that question is decided, then we know how we can proceed. And I think we should still do it that way.
I think in having this committee look at this, which I agree we need to have somebody look and see if there's some ideas that we can economically use this house. We need to think about the fact that whatever we do is gonna cost money in the out years to keep it up and maintain it if we use it. So as they look at this, somewhere we gotta factor that in. And I also want to make sure that they don't think, they don't say, okay, we gotta find a reason to use this house. One option needs to be, we just not go use it. It's, it's not worth doing anything to it. I'm not advocating that's the reason, but I'm saying that needs to be one of the options that you need to think about.
You're saying we may have a pig in the poke?
Yes.
That's my little two cents worth.
But I, I do, I do agree. We, we need to at least Tim, at least get Tim to say, okay, this is, you can only do fifty percent of the tax value, and the tax value is four hundred thousand, so you can only spend two hundred thousand or whatever it is. Let the committee come up with some ideas along with staff, see what it'll cost. We also need to incorporate, okay, if we keep this building and keep it running, what is it gonna cost long-term to maintain it? And make a decision.
I mean, and, and this is my little two cents worth. I mean, anything that you go to do, i- it's gotta come up the code like on the commercial side of things, okay? And, and that blows it out the water right there, okay? That's why I said, it's really, you're, you're gonna be hard pressed. And, and you know, my little thought would be this, I mean, if you say, well, we can't do anything else, but we're gonna keep it and rent it. I mean, I really want, would like to know who, I mean, who brainstormed this deal. You know, the engineer maybe told us that, but if we're spending all the money.
I was the one who actually brought this to the table for the Board of Commissioners.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying this and not to hurt your feelings. I just think it was poor planning, okay? I think there should have been some more, you know.
But we are where we, we are where we are.
Yeah, and what I'm saying, I don't want to see that, the town spend a lot of money on a piece of junk. Okay, that's, that's my point.
Yep.
Okay?
It's.
If you go and look at it.
I think as mayor of Proton, you're not allowed to say anything. Is that right?
No. I'm just allowed just as well as you are.
He's entered debate, but that's fine.
Yeah. And, and you know, I mean, it, it's just like, anywhere you go, we already in the hole with it, and, and, uh, Murdo, he, he's a builder. I mean, he, he, he knows what he's talking about. And, and you know, I know a little bit, you know? But the thing is, it's just, you know, we already, it's kinda like we in the hole now. We're gonna try to dig out sometimes. You bet, you need to know when to say, okay, far enough. So I mean, we better look real close at this, because I really don't want to see us spending any money on this. I mean, there's some other things I'd like to see happen, but, but that's not one of them. I think it was, you know, I just, you know, it's kinda easy when we, we, you know, we spend the tax dollars, you know what I'm saying? But I know if I looked at it for me to buy it, I would have never wanted it. And I would look at what the cost of a si- you know, a sand wall is before I would buy a house to make a sand wall. That's just my little opinion.
But I think Pat said last year, they looked at it and said it'd be cheaper to buy the house.
But you know, somebody, you know.
Understand, but we are where we are right now.
That's right.
We need to figure out what we're gonna do going forward.
Let's do, I've got a, a good solution for that.
Well, I think we do need to let some other people, you know, the Parks and Rec or whoever, come back.
Let her take a look at it as long as we don't have to spend any more money. There's no more money on the pig and the poke.
But if they come back and say for five thousand dollars, you can do X, then you might think different.
Five thousand dollars wouldn't paint the shit.
I know.
You know what I'm saying? I mean, that's what you got, five thousand dollars.
What I'm trying to say is I think you need to keep an open mind till you get the facts.
Hey, I went by and took a look, and my mind closed right up right then. I mean, I saw, I could see that, what we had. You know, if we're gonna go and try to sugarcoat that, hey, that was, that was.
You win.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now we'll move on. Okay.
Uh, is.
So what, what are we gonna do?
All right, now how do you want to do this?
Well, we got a motion and we just did a discussion. You wanna vote or what?
You wanna vote?
What, would, would you mind repeating?
What is the motion?
Well, the motion was, the motion was to ask Parks and Rec to come up with recommendations of potential uses by next September. Mike seconded it. Mike has since suggested that before doing anything, Tim should give a clear answer whether or not this is, um, a structure that has a limitation of how much money you can put into it. In other words, pre-firm.
We have a motion on the floor?
We got a motion. You got a motion, and a second, I'll read it. She just clarified the motion.
Any more discussion?
I'm simply saying, if we, if we want to agree to ask Tim specifically about whether or not it is pre-firm and what the limit would be on potential renovations that you could do, then that would be a new motion. So we would undo the first motion if we agree that that's what we want to do before we do anything with Parks and Rec.
Who are you looking at?
Mike.
Well, you have to withdraw the first motion.
I will withdraw my motion.
So then I, I make a motion that we have the building inspector advise us on whether or not the property is restricted on, on what we can, the amount of improvements we can do to this. And after we get that information, then we can revisit. And after we get that information, then we can revisit the, the idea of sending this to Park and Recreation and what the parameters will be for the, what we do send to Park and Recreation.
Okay, let's, let's, let's talk for a second. Has Heather got all this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you got a new motion?
We got a new motion on the floor, do I have a sec?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye.
So you're no.
That's right.
Okay. So it's four to one?
Four to one.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you get all that Heather?
That question ain't gonna hurt it.
Huh?
That question ain't gonna hurt it.
Okay. I just think we, we wasted time. All right. Item number thirteen, discussion and possible action on a request to the Inlet and Beach Protection Board for a suitable document on protecting our dunes for owners and visitors and recommendations of best ways to disseminate the information. Commissioner Pat.
The last couple inlet beach protection boards, there's been, um, discussion about the dune signs being in and they're going to put up the stay off the dune signs. And to member of the public, I simply mentioned that, um, a lot of the problem to me is that visitors and sometimes even some of our non-resident owners, um, I'm not sure that they actually realize what protecting the dunes means in terms of what are we asking them not to do? It's stay off the dunes, there's a fine, but what does it really mean, stay off the dunes? And that maybe there should be a one pager, a simple one pager that is more about education of, you know, why you stay off the dunes, what we're trying to protect. Um, I know that there are, are towns, cities in different states that actually do have these kinds of things. Um, it could be that the Inlet Beach Protection Board could find something that already exists and make it Town of Holden Beach, or it could be that it was something that they would tweak, but it seemed to me that the Inlet Beach Protection Board could be the proper place to quickly produce a one pager of what it means to protect our dunes and to give some recommendations about the best way to get this message out. Um, so that was a thought I had. There seemed to be some members on the Inlet Beach Protection Board that thought that this made sense to do it, that they didn't understand why stay off the dune signs might not actually achieve that much. So I'm proposing that the board consider asking the Inlet Beach Protection Board to produce a one pager that, again, um, make sure that the information is supported by, you know, it's legally, um, regulation law, um, correct and to figure out the best way to get it out there to our owners and our visitors.
That's your motion?
So my motion is to propose that the, the Board of Commissioners make this formal request to the Inlet Beach Protection Board to produce a document by May twen- May of twenty twenty, so we have something for the season.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Item number fourteen, discussion and possible decision on solicitation for audit services for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen and twenty audit. Commissioner Tyner.
All right, thank you very much. First of all, I wanted to announce, we have our, you probably got the email, we got our first audit committee meeting February fourteenth, it's Friday.
Correct.
All right, um, can't read my notes. All right, the ordinance thirty, you mean, thank you. All right, there you go. All right, um, the Audit Committee ordinance, number thirty dot twenty-six B three states that the rec, uh, that part of responsibility of the Audit Committee is to recommend to the Board of Commissioners the selection of the independent external audit firm to conduct the annual external audit. So the au- the Audit Committee has responsibility each year of making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners of who the external audit firm will be. The decision is the Board of Commissioners as to who the audit firm is. I think, or I believe as the new chairman coming in, that we ought to solicit proposals or bids for new audit services for our audit coming up for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Uh, one of the reasons I feel like we should do this is to make sure that we've getting, we're being, getting the services competitively priced. I have some concerns that the audit firm we have today, we're paying more than we need to. I have to talk to the town, town manager about this. He is in agreement that, he agrees we ought to put it out for bid. He, he has said that we can get it out on February fourteenth, the afternoon of February fourteenth, request of two-week deadlines, we have it back February twenty-eighth. We'll have a special Audit Committee meeting March second or third to review the, uh, proposals and to, uh, make a recommendation and then bring that recommendation back to the Board of Commissioners in the March meeting. The reason we're pushing this so fast is we have learned, um, all of us went to government school in Wilmington a couple of weeks ago, and one of the things we heard is there's fewer and fewer audit firms that want to do municipal audits. So if we wait long, we may have fewer audit firms we can go to and, and ask for their services. So we wanna go ahead and, and move this quick, get a decision made, bring it back to the Board of Commissioners on, in the March meeting.
You wanna put that in the form of a?
Well, I have a motion here on the page. The Board of Commissioners directs the town manager to solicit bids for audit services for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty audit. Solicitation for bid should be distributed on February fourteenth and responses should be due by February twenty eighth. And then the next page is the directive form that I filled out to go along with it.
Okay.
So that's my motion.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? David?
Uh, the only thing I would add to that by, uh, moving the selection process up to March is it gives us the staff more time in order to get ready for the audit so that it can be completed by October the thirty-first, which is the, the normal deadline. I was, um, uh, privy to a briefing at the manager's winter conference, uh, conducted by Sharon Edmison of the LGC, and because of some of these, um, shortfalls in audit firms availability, there's still over two hundred, uh, local governments in North Carolina that are tardy on their eighteen nineteen audit. So that is only gonna become more exacerbated, um, as, as, as time goes on.
Okay.
We're not one of the ones that are tardy on hours.
Okay, we're ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Next item, item fifteen, discussion and possible action on a request to the Audit Committee for a recommendation of the process for the, for selecting an audit firm and recommendation of the audit firm to perform the audit of financial statements for the year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Commissioner Pat.
Okay, the last few years, um, we get recommendations from the Audit Committee, but the recommendations from the Audit Committee are generally, we recommend that you pick this firm and that we all agree to it. But there, in my mind, there hasn't really been much explanation and justification of how that was arrived at. So what I would like is, I would move that we request that the Audit Committee provide a brief description of the process they followed in making their selection as well as the selection recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for the audit firm at the March meeting.
And Pat and I have discussed this previously, I'm okay with it. I come from an environment, when you look at vendors, you put together a scorecard and here's the criteria you're evaluating those vendors on and how you score them out, it's not a big deal. I got it on the agenda for August fourteenth.
Okay. So what it says?
Excuse me, February fourteenth.
February fourteenth, okay.
My, mine was to move that we get both the process and description and the selection recommendation from the Audit Committee in March. So that is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
David, you all good?
Yes, sir.
Brian?
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes carry. All right, item sixteen. It's all about the budget tonight. Discussion and possible action on setting the budget meeting schedule for the creation of the two thousand twenty, twenty-one budget. Commissioner Pat.
Okay, I just think that we need to get started with calendars. Um, I think last year we had, did we have five meetings?
Mm-hmm.
I think we had five meetings. I, I would actually hope we could go down to four, I think, but I, I, I think we could go down to four meetings. Um, but the, the thing is, we have to agree how many meetings and then we basically have to work with the town clerk and the town manager on getting those meetings scheduled at the appropriate times. Reminding everybody that we were going to also use the first budget meeting to finalize our objectives, to try to finalize our objectives. So, you know, I, I would hope that we would be able to have this meeting sometime in early March. But can we agree four meetings instead of five?
Can you, can you, for us newbies, can you review the structure of the meetings last year if you remember that far back? Wasn't it like two on revenue, two on expenses?
There-
Is that what it was?
It, it was, uh, a lot of the first one was discussion of objectives and the objectives that specifically applied to budget and finance, okay? And then I think the next one was when there were the discussions of revenues and then there was expense and then, there did seem to be duplication of revenue and expense. But I have to say, the first meeting, a lot of it was the discussion about what are the financial objectives and, you know, what is it we need to take into consideration before we get started? I mean, this is again, this is something that the department heads come to, the town manager runs, and I think that five meetings seemed a bit excessive, but I'm not sure that three meetings is enough.
Yeah.
If we set meetings and one ends up not being needed, it's, it can always be canceled.
Yep.
Um, so I, I would just suggest that we schedule four meetings with the idea that the first one is largely about the objectives and wants and nice, you know, want to haves. And then-
I, I, I think that our schedule and the number of meetings is gonna be dictated by the board's availability.
I don't doubt that.
I, I, and so I would suggest that perhaps y'all give Heather your calendars through the thirtieth of June and let us try to, um, meld that into some semblance of approaching four meetings. Whether or not we're able to, uh, get y'all, you know, to assemble a quorum for four meetings is another thing. We just gotta see who's available when.
So you just, you are gonna shoot just for a quorum? I mean, you're, you're trying to get off, I mean, it'd be nice to have all five of us here, but if you get a-
It'd be nice to have all six of you there.
With six, yeah.
Yeah, um, yeah, that's, that's the desired, uh, end state and of course, that's really what we need when we're talking about budget. Um, but I, I need to get your, your calendars first so we can see what exactly we got to work with. I, I would prefer to have the entire board participate, especially in the early on things. Now, I'll scratch that. I would prefer to have the entire board for all of those meetings.
So we agree that we will all send Heather our availability through June thirtieth? We don't have to make, we can just all agree that and we'll all do it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good to go?
Yeah.
Item seventeen, discussion and possible action to begin the town manager appraisal process in a closed session at the end of the first budget meeting. Commissioner Pat again.
This saves us calling a special meeting to start the process. Um, the board has not been very good at getting the appraisal of the commission, of the manager and then his subsequent obje- objectives done early in the year, and I really would like to see us do the process properly. Um, if we can start the process attaching it to the first budget meeting, and it typically takes three discussions to cover the appraisal and then finish up with objectives, then we will be way ahead of where we were the last two years. So if people don't object, I would just say, whenever we do the first budget meeting, we will start the appraisal process, which is a closed session. So I move that we just agree to this so that we don't have to call a special session to do appraisal, step one.
Mike?
Second.
Oh, she just wants us to agree, if that's okay?
I'll agree.
Okay. Everybody good? All right. Item eighteen, discussion and possible action on encroachment agreement between the town and Tom Wumble. We're gonna turn that over, over to Ms. Heather one time.
Mr. Wumble has requested to encroach upon Hillside Drive, which is under the dunes for the purpose of constructing a walkway to cross the dunes and to gain access to the beach. He needs to have the agreement in place before he can apply for the building permit and the attached form that you guys have in front of you is the standard one that we've done in the past.
The board's pleasure.
I mean, David, is there, you got any issue with it or is Tim?
No, I'd, I'd recommend, this is a, a standard, uh, common practice that we, uh, follow for property owners that are in these same circumstances on Hillside Drive. There's no new ground plowed here, this is-
Yeah, I, I spoke to inspect, I spoke to Inspector Evans before the meeting to reach, and he has no problem with this, familiar with the procedure.
Okay.
So we need a motion?
We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to, to, uh, approve the encroachment and the, the encroachment agreement as presented.
Second.
We got a second? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. All right, the town managers report.
Yes, sir. In keeping with the rapid pace that we're moving with tonight, I'll, I will move right on. Um, I did submit the town's position regarding the inlet hazard areas to the Coastal Resources Commission on the thirty-first of January. Additionally, ATM Franway, our coastal consultant engineer, has provided a technical memorandum and Tim Evans and Rhonda, uh, they, Tim left early, but he and Rhonda will be attending the CRC meeting tomorrow with specific instructions to reiterate our, uh, positions previously communicated. Um, we do have a vacant budget and fiscal analyst position that we've been, uh, that we've advertised for. Um, that will probably be, um, a, a process that we go to in order to get the right person for that job. Lift Station Three upgrade schedule, uh, we should finalize the contract documents of this week with a pre-construction conference next week, the twentieth of February, notice to proceed sixteenth of March, with construction starting on March the twenty-third and an anticipated completion date, substantial completion date, the week before Christmas, eighteen December. Those are a couple of the, the preambles to what, um, the administration section has really been involved with over the last several weeks regarding FEMA. Uh, we've received our final Irene reimbursement. People don't even remember Irene, it's been so long. Now, is that six years that since? So we got our last, we think, hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, uh, reimbursed from Irene and we're still waiting on our final payment for math- from Irene, and we're still waiting on our final payment for Matthew, which is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Florence and Michael, we have received approval for those two projects. We've signed, we've signed the project worksheets, returned them to the state, along with our first month's report on each of those storms as required. And we will be bringing budget amendments to the board next month so that we'll be able to accurately house our, our anticipated expenses and be able to sequester our revenues in the right location in anticipation of a follow-on single audit. All of the grants that exceed, I believe it's three quarters of a million dollars, are subject to a separate single audit. These are big numbers. These will qualify for that, so we wanna make sure that we get our house set up right before we, before we get into the process for real. To that, to that point, we have conducted a project familiarization office visit with personnel from the local government commission last week to anticipate, uh, uh, being able to acquire short-term financing, essentially a bridge loan, once we get to the point where we need to have those projects done. We will need some short-term financing, so we're, are, have performed those office visits and received positive feedback as to how to go about that. Additionally, we have met with the regional Department of Public Safety staff. We're gonna need all the help we can, so we're making sure that we've contacted the, the regional Department of Public Safety staff so that should we need additional assistance, it's readily available. So that said, realistically speaking, my guess on an estimated project timing date or start date would be the winter of two thousand twenty-one. I've said it before, and I'll continue to say that, this, this is not going to be drive-through McDonald's. These projects, as we've seen with Irene and Matthew, are long-lived projects. This is a huge undertaking. It is going to take time. In addition to that, we've got, so that's, that's the projected timeline is winter of two thousand twenty-one, but there's lots of open water between now and then, and many variables involved, to include the addition of Dorian into the mix. We're talking twenty-four million dollars for Florence and Michael together. Dorian has been qualified or quantified, and an, at an additional fifteen million dollars, so we're up in the forty million dollars range on those three projects together. The timing of them, we are uncertain as to whether or not we'll be able to bundle Florence and Michael with Dorian. Logically, one would assume that if you just have one mobilization, you're gonna save eight million dollars instead of having three different projects, but we're just gonna have to work through those. In addition to that, we're in the middle of conducting our sand search for the projects. We've had to source a second surveyor. The first one got a bigger, better deal. We couldn't get good weather here. Big project off of Florida, gone. So now we have sourced a second surveyor, and, but we're anticipating that to be accomplished by the end of February, weather permitting, with the subsequent permit revisions to be submitted to the regulatory agencies by the end of April. Regarding the canal dredging project and the Dog Park reconstitution, the Scotch Bonnet Site, we've actually performed the second ditching of that site. It appears it is still wet, it's not ready, it's going to be a while, but we have performed the second ditching of it, and it is, it is working, but it's gonna take a while. The Lockwood Falling Inlet Crossing Maintenance Project, I had an update from Irv Woods earlier today. That is the project on the, it's a navigation project that is putting the sand on the end of the beach as beneficial placement. As of Monday, they were near the Dunescape entrance. They've moved west a little bit, um, then passed three oh five Ocean Boulevard East. We are of the understanding that it's about to wrap up. They did have some downtime, but we're anticipating the demobilization to occur sometime this, this week, realistically. That's when we think that will happen. I know Irv wants it to make sure it goes on past this house with the, with the, the sand placement, but there, we think that they're about done. Just as soon as that demobilization occurs, sand fence and vegetation will go in. There is a partnership arrangement with the Holden Beach Re-Nourishment Association, who's gonna pick up a portion of the sand fence cost. Lastly, would like to make mention of the town's fifty-first birthday party that will be held this Friday at noon, and which time we'll close the time capsule in celebration of our fiftieth anniversary. And then there is also a five K race that is being cosponsored with the Brunswick Arts Council on Saturday, March the fourteenth. It's important, you know, we have a lot of races here, but this one is going to be punctuated by a special event that is going to involve a mural, a participatory mural painting of the bathroom at Bridgeview Park, so we're excited about the opportunity to partner with, for a public art display. That's all.
That's all you got?
All I got.
Can I have one question? Just the mayor's comments, can I have a question?
Sure.
And I, I, like, the, the dredged dike that we own on the end of Heron Landing?
Yes.
Town owns that, that is town property.
That's correct.
We just got a little eez in the situation going. Okay. Where the drainpipe goes out into canal, okay, from that dike? Like...
There's two, there's two of them. You talking about the east one or the west?
The one that's on the east end? Is it working properly?
Maybe, maybe. I hadn't inspected it in a while. That, that was, it was working for the purposes of the last time that we used it. I don't know what state it's in now, but, but it's, there's a duct bond at the end down there.
That's right. I was just wondering if there was something that could be done, maybe, you know, so we could get that thing dried on that.
We'll take a look at it.
Okay, okay. It's great to see all our little scoutmasters tonight. We're glad to have you in attendance, and, and please come back and join us anytime, okay? It's just good to see young folks out like that, and, and it's really good to see a nice crowd out, okay? And, and, uh, just keep coming. And Aaron came by today, and he, he's pretty, he's pretty sick, you know, coughing up and everything, and, and, you know, so I said, listen, you got to hurry up, 'cause I wasn't anticipating all this business, okay? So I'm just, I got Woody pushing on this side, Murdoch pushing me on the other side, so we're trudging through, okay? But, uh, keep coming, okay? And, and, uh, bring the issues that are imported to us as a board. It's like, we're hearing you on the speed, you know, and, and we're hearing about, we're hearing it all, okay? Dog Park is something that we've got a lot of concern with, and, and, and we're, we're working on it. We had a, a, a piece of property was offered to us, but we'd have to come up, we'd, we'd have to raise the taxes. You see what I'm saying? There was, it was a lot, a lot of money for a little piece. I think David said we best not even pursue that, you know? I mean, we don't, you know? And, and we're working, we're looking at other things, but we, we haven't found the right match yet. Just, just be patient, it's coming, okay? And, 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 uh, Jeremy, thank you for the work, you know, the good work you're doing, you know, and, and, uh, we, we know you, you get caught up sometimes, you know? I want you to do, to tell Frank to slack up on my buddies a little bit, if you don't mind. And, and, and with that, we're gonna turn it over to the, to the board members, and we're gonna start with Mr. Woody.
Yep. First of all, thank y'all for showing up. Like I said, it's, it's good to see a bigger crowd, and, and do appreciate the scouts being here. They are doing this as part of getting a, a merit badge, and I told their scoutmaster I did it also a hundred years ago, where I went to the town council meeting in Lumberton and, and had to do all the work they're gonna do to get their merit badge, so, once again, I appreciate all of the scouts being here and y'all being here. Once again, those y'all that I sent my email to with asking for your feedback, one of the things I said during my campaign to some of my supporters was that I was gonna be soliciting feedback from people, 'cause I, you know, we need to know where you stand on some of these items. And, and once again, I said I sent out about a hundred emails, got about fifty-three responses. Some people waited till about five o'clock today to tell me what they thought, but I appreciate all the feedback, and, um, then lastly, as I mentioned earlier, all of us, the five of us, went to government school in Wilmington two weeks ago. It was all-day school where we learned about how to run a board meeting, and the rules of procedure, and finances and things like that, so it was, it was good education and gave us a chance to just be together with each other for a few minutes. All right, thank you.
Now, Mr. Brian?
I'd again like to thank everybody for coming out, and I stress immensely, and I will every time, you guys are the reason we're sitting up here. So if you don't communicate with us, we're probably not gonna do the right thing, or at least we won't have all the input that I feel like that we need. I would also like to recognize the scout group, looks like a half of them sleepy and the half of them's hanging in there with us. We appreciate you guys coming out, and I hope we didn't bore you too much. And again, it's good to see everybody, so keep it coming.
Mike?
Say same thing, thank you for coming. Keep, keep your cards and letters coming so we, we know what you, what you would prefer us to do. I'd also like to thank the scouts, even longer than Woody. I, I was a scout, and, uh, I, I would just say that a community that has a strong scout troop, scout, is a good community. We're, we're a lot better off when we have, if you're familiar with the scouts, their oath, their law, it just leads to good people, good citizens. They're not the kind of people the Chief Dixon has to worry about vandalizing any property, so, and I especially wanna thank the leaders for volunteering their time, because without the leaders volunteering their time, there'd be no troop. So thank you, thank you for coming and showing your interest. Also wanna commend the town manager, and Tim's not here, but if you haven't had a chance to see the response in opposition to the proposed inlet hazard areas, they did a terrific job on it. They, they addressed any number of issues, pointing out why this proposal is faulty in so many ways. I asked the town manager to place that on the town website, and that should be getting put up there pretty soon. He was waiting, I think you were waiting to get something from Franway that was later sent to the, to the commission. The other thing I'd like to say, as, as strong as that is, and as well-written as it is, it's important for us as individuals to also send in our reasons for opposition, so that they get a lot of, a lot of different ideas, a lot of thought, and they realize that a lot of people are opposed to it. So I, I would ask you to take the time to, to do that. You have till March third, I believe, is the new date? The new date for submission is March third. So again, thank you all for, for being here.
Ms. Thad?
Again, thank you for coming. I have one thing that I think everybody needs to be reminded of. In addition to the Dog Park comments, there've been a lot of comments coming in about dogs running free on the beach and people not cleaning up after their pets. This time of year, it's our residents who are predominantly here, and we're the people who are proudest of our island. So I would just ask all of you to please be cognizant of some people are nervous about dogs, so if you've got your dogs on the beach, have them under control so that they don't scare other people. And wherever you are, be it on the beach or on the street, please clean up after your dog. It's just a courtesy to everybody else. Thanks.
At this time, we have public comment. Anybody have any, anything they'd like to share with us? All right, we'll come to the board. State your name and everything, Louis. Let everybody know who, who's talking.
Louis Mitchell, one thirty-three Parkin Drive. Six dollars down here this, this time, I figured I'd better say something for you. Just commenting that the Christmas trees on the beach are really doing the job, and those strong winds we had the last couple of weeks. Most all the trees have sun, sand on them, some of them up to a third color already, and then one or two are just about completely covered, so a good job on Christmas trees.
Mr. Ashley?
Ashley Royal, one forty-four Salfish. Mr. Mayor of Pro Tem and Commissioner, Mr. Town Manager, I've come tonight representing the Holden Beach Chapel as the Chair and Board Trustees. You recall last month, we submitted a letter to the town requesting use of this public meeting area. The, the chapel is involved in a major renovation of our sanctuary, and as a result, it's rendered our fellowship hall unavailable for committees and groups to meet there during the week. So I just wanted to extend the thanks to the town for allowing us to use this meeting area. We really value our relationship with the, with the town, and I'll just reinforce that should the town's facilities become unavailable, the chapel's facilities are here for your disposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with any comments?
I'm Urban Woods. I live in Virginia, but own two homes on the east end, two five-nine and two-eight-nine Ocean Boulevard East. I'm retired, I get down here as often as I can. This is my first opportunity to speak to the new board, and I appreciate your service. What struck me listening tonight is that all of you seem to be very aware, cognizant of what the people are telling you, and you're, you're reaching out, and it looks like a good board to me. Regarding the east end, as, as David mentioned earlier, the dredging project is underway. I bought hearing aids a couple of years ago because I got frustrated coming to this meeting and not being able to hear anything, but I'm glad that I can take them out at night while that bullnoser is working. And I don't care, it, it does keep me awake.
Clap, 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 clap.
They're putting sand on the beach, and, and they're doing a wonderful job, and I have no idea what the town's cost for the huge yard and the sand for that project is, but historically, the sand that comes on to the east end is pennies on the dollar compared to the big projects that are down on the rest of the beach. There are some people who might think we get sand more regularly than we should, but it's cheap sand, and it also is opening up the navigation, which is extremely important to the farmers and the recreational voters. I appreciate y'all's support, and I've said before, one beach, one island, one community. The inland hazard area situation is now getting other people interested, if not just the east end problem, it's now halfway.
That's right.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. And thank you. Any other comments?
In the R two one twenty-four, Drone Straight. Just wanted to make a comment about, talking about the dunes. And I don't know if it's something that the Park and Recs would have this capability or if there's funding for it, but maybe instead of us just having the signs that have a fine, but maybe of just a quick little statement on top of that that says, you know, when you cross the dunes, what you're doing to it. Visiting other beaches, walking along the walkways to get to the beach, there's always informative signs. I don't, again, it's a project that I'm not sure that the Park and Recs would be a part of, or if there'll be funding for it, but just take a thought on that one.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. This time, Article twenty-three. Executive Session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one eight point one one. Executive session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four-three dash three one eight point one one A. One to approve executive session minutes. That will be Commissioner Gluckowski. And North Carolina General Statute one four-three dash three eighteen point one one to consult with Attorney Commissioner Sullivan.
I move that we go into executive session pursuant to the reasons listed here.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks for coming out, everybody.